Also Supreme Court, too? The Capitol building and all that stuff?
Capitol's locked down. You can't go in there. A little on the lobby and the bottom, but really nothing in there. We took a picture, you know.
Trey, if you're ready.
Yeah, I'm absolutely ready now. Yeah, I've lost control before I started. All right, everybody can stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I feel like I've really been gone in like four months for some reason. Can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor? Hi, Vicki.
Hello. Councilmember Rivas.
Here.
Councilmember Bozick.
Present.
Councilmember Breckner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Present.
And Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Full boat. All right. Approval of regular council minutes for February 22nd, 2022.
Motion approved.
Second. It's a motion of second on the floor, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. First reading, Madam Auditor.
Thank you.
No, this is here by getting the tax payers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal office of Porter County will meet the Porter County Government Administration Building. Look here, 15th of August, January 24th, 2022. Consider the following appropriation adjustments to county budgets for the year 2022, and to transact any further business which may be handled by council. Prosecutor pre-trial fund, Fund 2503. Office supplies, $10,000. Legal, $20,000. Animal shelter donation fund, Fund 4101. Other supplies, $15,000. Building maintenance, $50,000. Sheriff donation fund, Fund 4108. Control fee, $14,000. Sheriff inmate processing fees, $4911. Other equipment, $71,137. And domestic violence grant fund, Fund 8112. Office supplies, $4,000. Office fixtures over $100, $1,000. Training and ads, $16,000. And office equipment over $1,300. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have the right to be heard around. The appropriation adjustments is finally made. Will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, where applicable, the DLGF will make a determination as to sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made. Vicki Abad, auditor, report of county published May 12th, 2022.
You guys are smiling over there. What happened?
There's some wording that I've been wanting to change at the bottom.
Chesterton?
No. It's about the DLGF approval process that it is now an automatic because it's now all done electronically. And so it's an automatic approval process, which is a wonderful investment made by the DLGF.
All right. All right. So we're gonna change things a little bit, and I'm gonna introduce somebody. So apparently we have a new 911 director.
Oh.
So we're gonna bring her up, Debbie.
Congratulations. Just hearing about it.
Yeah, come on up. We're gonna break you in. You have nothing on the agenda, but we'll kind of break you in and see how this goes.
Is she asking for money already?
No.
Maybe I should.
You're up there.
Yeah, I am.
So Debbie was just promoted to the new 911 director. When? Tell us a little bit what's going on.
Well, last Thursday, actually, I was promoted. And so my first day was Friday. And Monday and Tuesday, I've been days two and three, and it feels like three years instead. But it's been exciting. I've learned a whole lot, and I'm excited to lead the center. I started my career here, and this is where I am. So I hope it all.
What was your title previously?
I... Actually, I started dispatching in the center in 1997 when it was just the Sheriff's Department before it consolidated. And then I moved to Michigan, lived there for about 13 years, and came back in 2010. And so I've gone from dispatcher to assistant supervisor to supervisor to training coordinator, and now I'm the director.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Well, good. I appreciate you coming to see how it goes. And I think I'm excited. So from...
Yeah, hopefully you never ask us for money. We're good.
Don't count on it. That much I've learned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right. Circuit Court Judge Mary DeBoer and Juvenile Attention Director Allison Cassis.
Hey, everybody.
Whoa.
The general fund, there's a transfer, $3,000 from Mental Health Services Drug Court to furniture fixtures over $100. Reason, need to purchase new storage cabinets for the court. There's a second transfer in here, $1,500 from Mental Health Drug Court to telephone and internet services. Reason, funds needed for MiFi service plan for juvenile court.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion of second on the floor for the two transfers. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thanks, gang.
This could be an easy night. Sit down, get in, run. IT general fund, transfer $14,000 from data processing equipment to training and education. Reason, additional funds needed for internet security training. There's another transfer, $6,000 from data processing equipment to furniture fixtures over $100. Reason, additional funds needed to replace broken office furniture. Another transfer, $20,000 from data processing equipment to maintenance agreements. Reason, additional funds needed to cover maintenance contracts.
I'll make the motion on all three transfers.
Second.
Motion of second on all three transfers. Discussion. Seeing...
Are you buying these stuff in the pictures?
Yeah.
It looks pretty fancy. They don't have drawers and stuff.
They have drawers.
They got drawers?
Yeah, I would... They gotta have drawers.
They made out of oak?
You have furniture there breaking up there?
Oh, yeah. It's bad.
Like a resin desk.
Further discussion. No? Appreciate what you're doing, finding the money, moving it around. All in favor of the three transfers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Portage Professor General Fund, a transfer, $1,347 from contractual services training and education. Reason needed for online IAAO courses and AAS designation.
Motion.
Second.
Motion of second on the floor, discussion. No discussion? All in favor of the transfers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Sheriff. Sheriff donation fund, there's an additional $12,000 to patrol canine. Reason, to cover the cost of canine. These monies have been donated by the Porter County Substance Abuse Council. Sheriff, MA Processing Fund, additional $71,137 to other equipment. Reason, to cover the cost of new identification bracelet systems for inmates.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion of a second to approve both additionals, one for the donation fund, the other from the processing fund. Discussion.
Are they expanding the canines or is this replacing one?
We are replacing. We have three dogs that are... One retired late last year, and we have two more that are retiring this year. So this is replacement.
But this would just be for one, right?
Yes.
So they're replacing two down the road or two more?
We actually already replaced one, and that was paid for by HIDA. And we've got this one that is coming through the Substance Abuse Council, and then the Sheriff's Department has actually has funds already established to pay for them.
Is there any thought of expanding that more than it is? Or is it a pretty good size now with the numbers?
We actually are looking, working with HIDA to try and get another dog. So, but right now, training is a little bit of an issue.
Expensive?
Expensive, and it's five weeks to have a patrolman not on the road.
Oh, they gotta be with them.
How many do you have?
Six.
Total?
Six total.
Six.
So when the patrolmen are working with the dogs, they're off the streets?
No, just during training.
Oh.
They would be... They're in Michigan for five weeks.
Oh.
Five days a week.
Thought they trained around here. I had no idea.
Yep.
So it's like a special place to do all this?
Yeah, it's a canine. It's a special canine.
Is that where the dogs come from, too?
Yep.
Oh. Oh, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Okay. It's just neat to know about that stuff.
On the bracelet system?
Yes, sir.
Now, is that part and parcel of everything? Or is that... My apologies. It works.
I didn't mean to call you.
So is that the total, total cost of the system replacement?
Yeah, so we're looking at the technology with the program itself. Devices are gonna be similar to this. The bracelets that have an infrared dot inside of it, so we can... That specific inmate and their picture will come up, and then it'll send the information to the computer. What we do now for head counts, we go around with a big piece of paper and all the names and checking them off as we look at them. So it's gonna mainstream.
Have we not talked about that recently? Because it sounds so familiar to me. Did we?
It just has come up recently.
But this is the first time for the request for the money?
Yes.
We put in for it for some of the COVID grant money we were trying to get. You might have seen it. While we applied for that, they actually denied it.
Okay, good. So that's probably where I remember it.
Yep.
Thank you.
I would like to know, do you think that I have good compliance? I mean, with the prisoners?
I'm sorry?
Something they're gonna have to wear?
Well, they wear wristbands now.
Oh, they do?
The only difference is there's no technology within the wristband. It's just their photo with their name. So officers are looking at that photo, checking their name off a printed copy, right? And then that officer goes back to his workstation, and then the partner sits there in the computer and has to enter all that information. Once we scan that individual right then and there, whether in the chow line, photo will come up. We can identify that individual. That information's automatically sent to the computer.
It sounds really neat, but in the past, we have, you know, there's a problem with compliance sometimes.
Very little.
What happens if a... How do they get them on and off? Can they rip them off? Can they swap them?
It's just like now, it's a hard plastic one. So it's put on so they don't, if they damage it, we do get reimbursement for damaged wristbands.
And those wristbands are reusable? Or they're not gonna be?
No, because it's specifically for that individual.
So will they be...
Just like now, the wristbands we have now are not reusable.
Is it a big increase in cost compared to what we're paying now for their actual wristbands?
No.
Further discussion? We get a roll call on both those additionals?
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Breckner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Keep up the great work.
Thanks.
Joy, the nice weather out there.
Prosecutor.
Hello, sir.
At the prosecutor pre-trial fund, there's an additional $10,000 to office supplies and $20,000 to legal. Reason, need to appropriate line item for this fund for office supplies. And also for additional... For legal, we have a constant flow of depositions. Also, there's domestic violence VOCA grant fund, additional $4,000 to office supplies, $1,000 to office fixtures under $100, $16,000 to training and education, $3,000 to office equipment over $100. Reason, appropriations for... Appropriations need for reimbursement and future anticipated expenses.
Make the motion on both?
Second.
Motion and a second on both additionals. Discussion.
I have one question. It said the reason is for future anticipated expenses?
The money is in the grant. We just don't have the line items set up yet. So if there is an expense, we draw on it. So it's just kind of a bookkeeping matter, really.
Okay.
How much... So what's $10,000 office supplies? You're just buying like paper and stuff? That's just normal stuff?
Yes, and that's another newer line item. So we're using and we're drawing on our pre-trial diversion funds as opposed to a different fund that is, you know, always a little bit distressed.
You say it's a little bit under stress?
Yeah, we have two deferral funds, infraction deferral. That's the one that we're really struggling to keep in the black, although we're doing much better, I think. But the pre-trial diversion fund is one that we can use for our office supplies deposition expenses and to pay all our trial expenses. We've had a lot of expensive trials in the last couple of months.
Any other questions? Discussion? We get a roll call on two additionals. Madam Auditor.
Okay, Councilmember Breckner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
See you later, gang.
Thank you. What you guys are doing.
Animal shelter general fund, there's a Form 144, kennel supervisor to healthcare technician, rescue event volunteer coordinator to healthcare technician. Reason, job title changes for two positions and new job descriptions for new title changes with no changes in salaries. There's a... Keep going, and then... And the animal shelter shelter fees, Form 144, kennel supervisor to healthcare technician, rescue event volunteer coordinator to healthcare technician. Reason, job title changes for two positions and new job description for new title changes with no changes in salary.
Make the motion on both Form 144s and the additional.
There's an additional $15,000 to other supplies and $50,000 to building maintenance. Appropriation needed for other supplies. So there's a motion on the floor for the two 144s and the additional. Motion of second, discussion. Seeing none, we get a roll...
Well, I'd like to ask a little bit about the building maintenance. What does that pertain to specifically? $50,000?
The $50,000 will be to repair the outer kennels.
Oh.
They're pretty tore up right now. The dogs have done quite a number on them. So we're looking to replace all of those outer kennels with a stronger gauge wire in the chain link fencing. So they can't escape. We've had a few escapes.
And I'd just like to comment on the... So the animal shelter fee fund, that's the donation fund.
This is... Yeah, that's a misprint. It should be the animal shelter donation fund, not the shelter fees fund.
So the donation fund.
Donation fund.
Which we're extremely appreciative of.
Yes.
There's three specific donors that donated very graciously to help that fund that allows for this type of work to be done. So, and I don't know if... I'm sure we've recognized them, and I don't know if they're anonymous or however that works, so I don't want to get pulled over. But three very terrific donations to the shelter, which I think we should be very appreciative of and also recognize that, I'm sure, because of the confidence in the shelter, in the leadership of the shelter, the facility that we have, all helps contribute to people's willingness to donate to a great cause that they know the money's gonna be managed well. So congratulations, sir.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
We've come a long, long way.
We have, for sure.
So...
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Further discussion?
What happens when a dog escapes?
We panic. We panic.
I love the...
We have gotten both of them back.
Oh, okay. I'd call Sims, call Craig Sims.
Oh, my God. I need another job doing it.
I have one question. You have a director at 71,000, assistant director, that's your number two? Take it. The disparity in these salaries, is that something that is...
It has been addressed.
It has been addressed.
Not formally yet, but yeah.
Because that's a wide range between...
I agree.
Number one and number two. You're the number two?
I am.
Yeah. And it's been addressed with the commissioners?
Not officially, but it has been brought up, yes.
Discussed?
Discussed.
Is he only part-time, is that why?
No.
Full-time.
Sorry, that was not meant to offend you. I am sorry.
I can't. It's okay.
Surely you jest.
So you are just trying to bridge that gap a little bit?
I am, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? We get a roll call on two 144s and the additional?
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Breckner.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Second reading.
Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriate in the annual budget, therefore, be it resolved by the Porter County Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Prosecutor pre-trial fund, 2503, a total of $30,000. Animal shelter donation fund, 4101, a total of $65,000. Sheriff donation fund, 4108, $12,000. Sheriff inmate processing fee fund, 4911, $71,137, and domestic violence grant fund, 8112, a total of $24,000. And that concludes the second reading.
There you have it, second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'm just curious, are we getting any more feedback from the people doing the payroll study? Have we heard anything more of when they'll be done? Is it still on schedule to be done next month or not the month after, I thought?
You got the same. I think it's... Everybody's on schedule.
Okay. I was just wondering. I wasn't putting you on the spot. I was just... I wasn't sure if they're getting any more.
Yep.
Thank you.
Their second reading.
Oh, that's what you're looking for, motion?
What? Oh, did you make the motion?
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Second.
For second reading.
Gone for a month, and everybody forgets how to do it.
Wait till next month.
We get a roll call, Madam Auditor.
Yes. Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Breckner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And second reading is approved.
Attorneys report.
No news is good news. Nothing to report, so that's good.
Any other matter that may properly come before the council?
Weren't we gonna have the mental health people come? Didn't they go in front of the commissioners? And weren't they gonna come in front of us and give us a... Was I mistaken on that?
We got the recap. I don't know that they were coming in front of us, but I think they should. I... For some reason, I thought they were, but I don't know. That's why I...
Nobody's presented that. I mean, if that's what you guys want, we could surely reach out. I know Mike had them, you know, send everything over. I mean, that's your guys'...
Well, I guess, what are we gonna do with their... What are we gonna... Okay, they got the information now, what do we do? Where do we go from here?
I don't know. I haven't talked to the commissioners about it. I don't know. Mike, have you talked to the commissioners? Has anybody?
I just went through the PowerPoint and the study itself.
Well, we can reach out to them and ask and see if you would like them.
Yeah, I mean, because it sounds like, I mean, we got this. Let's move forward with this and see where we need to go, you know? Because with the appropriation of a lot of these funds and stuff, and we're all... I don't know. It seems like we're all getting engaged in what the community is doing. So this seemed to be a perfect opportunity to be a perfect opportunity to jump on there and say, hey, listen, here's something that this group figured out, and let's see if we're addressing it. Because the other thing, too, and I don't know if we talked about this, but, because I, you know, the last meeting I wasn't there, but when we allocate the funds, if there's money left over, has there been any discussion what to do with what's left, or is everyone anticipating that we're going to blow through that whole amount right off the get-go?
The requests are there for more than we have.
I'm talking about the art money, yeah. You know what I mean? Because, you know, like with our group, we did not allocate, we did not recommend the full amount that was requested. So if the other groups are doing similar things, then we may find that, what if we have about $29 million-ish? So what if we only allocate $27 million? Now we got a couple million left over. Has there been a discussion about what to do with that extra? That's what I'm saying.
So Vicki, can you speak to?
There hasn't been a discussion about that particular issue, but again, it will come before the county commissioners, and then you would have to appropriate the money, so it's back in your ball, in your court, excuse me. But the, your ball court is what I meant to say. But there was a discussion about groups that are not able to obligate the funds by July 1st of 2024. And at that point, if there's any money left on the table, then it comes back to the commissioners and the council, and you have, you know, about six months to figure out what to do with it at that point.
Okay.
And some of the projects might come in under budget.
Right. A lot of wishful thinking.
Just because you appropriate it doesn't mean that it's all going to be spent. So at some point, you will have to address that, but we're not even at that stage yet.
Okay. But again, with this mental health study coming in, if we figure that we need some more help in a certain direction, then I would like to seriously consider some leftover money, if available, to be considered for that. That, I guess it's all, I just want to put it on the table now, and so we don't forget and say, well, they blew that, you know, or.
Well, a good thing, there's, I mean, there's a lot of steps left in this whole process.
Exactly.
You know, it's just going to the subcommittees, and it'll go in front of the steering committee, which then ultimately goes to the commissioners for them to, really, technically, legally, they, they could throw out everything we hand them, or they could amend it, they can add to it, you know, then they write the plan. You know, amend the plan, add everything, what they, whatever the subcommittees, the steering committees feed to them, they're going to take that information and decide what they want to put in the plan. Then when they take that plan, they're going to hand that plan back to us for final funding.
Right.
Doesn't mean, we could fund a quarter of that plan, half the plan, all of the plan. I mean, so there's a lot of, you know, steps left to, you know, for us to be involved in it, you know, definitely ultimately, we're the last stop to fund it, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile to have them present whatever it was they came up with for the $25,000 consulting fee.
Right.
And looking at the recommendations that they have, I mean, it's, there's, you know, it seems to be, there's five recommendations, and some of them are what I would view as fairly general or not unexpected, frankly, and also not a huge cost associated with it. And that's with the exception of, the exception of one of the recommendations where it talks about, you know, developing a crisis center of some sort, develop 24/7/365 behavioral health crisis center. And I, you know, sure would like to hear them expound on that, what does that mean, or what does that look like, or what is the potential cost of that, and so to shed some light on the recommendations that they have presented, certainly.
Well, and it sounds like it'd be nice if Porter Stark was somehow involved so that, because I know when they came in front of us, they were talking about some really cool things that they're, you know, they want to implement, and some of that stuff might actually cross over into this.
My thought on that would be that if anything that we do related to mental health issues, Porter Stark has to be at the table, and I don't think that's how this process started, frankly. And so I think as we listen to the group to find out what they're suggesting, Porter Stark, I think, should be at the table, because they are our in-county experts who have taken care of it, and of course they have a funding source, and to do anything in silos, of course, would just create further divide and wouldn't accomplish anything.
Yeah.
I'd agree.
Sounds wonderful. We're moving in the right direction, I hope.
I think over the next couple of years, it's going to be important, and it's going to be a topic that's set forefront. You saw the article with coming out of the sheriff's memorial, that I believe the state legislators are going to allocate some money in their budget session next year to mental health, and apparently, it would appear we may be a pilot county. I have no clue, just talking to Mr. Brickner, I mean, I don't know what that means. So, but I think the state's looking at us as, in hopes that maybe we'll.
To be a leader.
Yes, to be a leader in it, so, again, I have no clue what that means, not sure they do yet, but who knows? So I think the conversation's going to continue down the path for quite some time with us, if we want to.
Yeah. I think it's necess, it's necessary. And I was, you know, when I was in DC this week, I talked to some other people about it, and there's, there's mental health issues everywhere, and now it's, it's starting to become a relatively normal conversation, you know, the COVID thing and the isolation and the concerns and, you know, what do we do, and now, you know, that Valpo has hired a social worker to kind of help out with some, some mental health issue things, you know, I mean, this is, it's moving in a different, different direction than it's ever been. And, so, yeah, let's go for this ride and let's help some people. Well, you know, and we've got the money to do something about it.
To make an impact, right?
Yeah, absolutely, the impact, absolutely.
I truthfully think that a lot of good things are going to be coming out of this art money, and had some good proposals, and it's just going to take time for it to be brought into, you know, reality. I mean, to that I, the subcommittees I sat on, they've had some very good, I think the quality of life is just going to be really improved when these projects are all, you know.
As long as gas prices go down.
That's Andy?
That's it, as long as gas prices go down, quality of life. Well, I was just a joker around. So, you got voices, leave me alone.
Mike?
Yeah, I do. One thing that I'd like to run past the council to see if there's an appetite for furthering discussion on the conditions, on the condition of our roads and the paving, and I know the Department of Development has talked about that to a pretty great extent at the commissioners' level. I know last year in 2021, we contributed an additional $3.5 million out of the, of the foundation holding account to provide for some additional roadway and paving, and that allowed us to get, I believe it was 17 neighborhoods touched with roads that hadn't been touched for over 20, 20 years. And that, you know, is just a fly speck in terms of the work that needs to be done throughout the county. And as it's been identified by the Department of Development, I mean, they have a whole list of priorities in terms of roads that need to be done. And, you know, throughout the county, we have 781 miles of roads that the county's responsible for. We were woefully behind before. Had our best year yet last year because we were willing to take a step and take, take some of the money that we had available to dedicate to additional roads to catch up ever so slightly. This past winter has been incredibly tough on the roads throughout, throughout the county, throughout everywhere. And so the problem still, the problem still exists. And the program as we have it today, you know, is kind of back to a normal-type year, which doesn't even keep us even. We just keep getting further behind. So my suggestion would be, if, if the council is willing to do it, is to have the Department of Development come forward, present a plan in the sense that if, if we were willing to spend $4 million additional to commit to road paving for 2022, what would that look like? What would that get us? And that's not a new, a new suggestion. I mean, this came from the Department of Development back in March, and I think in a presentation they had to the commissioners' office, suggesting that adding the $4 million of additional funding to the current strategy, which is $5 million from the commissioners, so a total of $9 million, which would by far be the best year yet, second or first. Last year, last year was our best year to date, now this would be surpassing that. And I think that wouldn't solve all of our problems throughout, throughout the county on roads, but it certainly would help get us closer to where we need to be. So my, my ask would be, if the council is, has the appetite for it, to have the Department of Development come forward, say if you guys would like to do this, this is what, what it would cost, or this is what it would look like, and then make a determination at that point if we're willing to take that step.
My, my thoughts on that is, I don't think there's anybody on this council that is not in favor of roads and safety. That's basically what it boils down to. But it's, I, if we have the money in that, that would be something to talk about.
Talk about our next, at our next meeting?
Yeah, and I know they're prepared, because they have been analyzing our roads for the last several years, so they know what needs to be done, but I would have them present at the next meeting.
So do we need to, we need to make a motion to have them, or not, just?
Jeremy controls the agenda. You can put him on it.
I think that's a great idea.
I'd be interested in listening, Mr. Justin, I think that makes sense.
Definitely.
And that's, is that Bob Thompson, is that the department?
Yeah.
Okay, that's Bob.
Yeah.
We're hearing it out.
Good.
Joey?
Good idea.
You getting, you building out a agenda already?
And then, and then I'm going to, another suggestion I'd like to throw out for another.
One.
Whoa.
We can't, we can't handle short meetings, so we want to have longer meetings.
Piling on, what do you?
I second that motion.
But another, another topic that we've talked about, but haven't made, haven't made enough strides, in my, in my opinion, is in the area of code enforcement and property maintenance. And we've had, you know, side discussions before about, we have a code enforcement officer who responds to complaints, and I think we've all seen pictures not too long ago, or most of us have, of a situation out in Union Township, one specifically that I can recall.
We've been dealing with it for years, yeah.
Have been dealing with it, and I know it's in bankruptcy court, and I know we've got attorneys engaged in that process to try to help put some teeth into the code, the county codes that we have. So that's one that's been pending for quite some time. I know there's, my guess is there's, if there's not, there should be, a list of properties that are on the watch list, for lack of a better term, but on the watch list, to say, these are properties where people have been complaining, neighbors have been complaining. I got a call last week from a resident in, in Porter Township, who lives out at Lake Eliza, and there's a property near his home where he's invested a lot of money, wants to make it a great place to be, and he's got a property down the street from him that he looks at, drives by each and every day, which is just in deplorable, deplorable condition, where if he wanted to sell his house, he couldn't sell his house. And so, and I think people are making calls, and I think they're getting some sense of response, but I know in order to really put teeth into the code enforcement, it, it takes resources, and it takes a willingness to dedicate resources to code enforcement, it takes a willingness to step up and put pressure on, on homeowners to do what they're supposed to do in terms of taking care of the property and being good neighbors and that sort of thing. So it takes, I think you have to be very intentional about it. And, and so I think the focus on that should, in my view, the focus on that should increase. And so, having said all that, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have Bob Thompson and the department present kind of where we're at relative to code enforcement, and is there a watch list of sorts based on complaints that have been called in, and what is the process, or what, if anything, have we been doing to make sure that we don't deal with these things for years? And I think that's the right thing to do for the neighboring property owners. So, second request for the next meeting, is to have Bob Thompson explain exactly where we're at relative to code enforcement.
Two Bob Thompson presentations? That's a long meeting. I think it's a good idea. Now, is there, I imagine the city, the municipalities have a different approach to code enforcement. Is there, is there any talk about, like, if Alpo does it well, or Portage does it well, that we would try and copy what they're doing or inventing our own?
And, and I have some, some experience in that. They, the county has wanted to make a move in that direction, to put more teeth into it. I think the county code as it's written, and it may need to be revised, but I think as it's written, if we enforce what's written and hold people accountable, I think we'd see some, some positive, positive change. But I just don't think we've been as intentional as we could or should, and that may mean additional resources to it.
Right.
You know, because I know in certain municipalities, it takes time, it takes effort, it takes legal fees, it's a process, but it's a, but it's an important one. So, you know, I think, and then Bob, that'd be a great opportunity for Bob Thompson to explain all that. And if, if, for instance, the code needs to change, then let's talk about potentially changing the code. And I've got some pictures that I'll share with you on this, the call that I got last week, just to give you an example of a property that clearly no one would want to live next door to.
Yeah.
So.
Sounds good.
There are, there are a few properties out there that, that are almost beyond deplorable, that you don't know how they got into that situation. And I have talked, I've had people call me, neighbors complaining, people complaining, and it seems as if, I don't know what the answer is. So maybe that is great that we do have Bob come forward and tell us what is the problem, why can't these, something be addressed? You know.
Make anything else? No, nothing?
Well, you know what, well, I'll say, our, our committee, our subcommittee on the art funds done, I thought was an awesome situation. We had our community people were outstanding, our trustees, my group were outstanding, it was, everybody, we had a couple little exciting, what do you want to call it? Some, some members on our group got a little excited at times, but it was all, it was all good, but it was, it was nice having people come in front, asking for things, explaining things, and we learned an awful lot about people in our community, and a lot of people had no idea even existed. So I think, and I think every group can easily say that, that we've got a lot of awesome nonprofits in our community doing outstanding things that people just aren't aware they're there. And, yeah, so I just want to say, it's, it's been a really cool experience, and, yeah, it's appreciated, so. Oh, you threw that fun, you know.
Vicki, you have anything to add to the process?
No. We're busy working on our next GAAP report, and we just finished a very, very good audit. It's one of the best audit reports that we've done, and clean audit finding in terms of federal compliance, which is very important for our federal grants, especially since we're going.
When did we get that GAAP report? I loved it.
The one that was just audited, whenever you want to see it.
It's the same one you sent out last year? Is that the one that, yeah? I was very.
Very thick. We're not going to make copies of it.
No, I don't. Want the entire thing. All right, is anything from the general public that wants to add?